Can you hear me?
Yes!
Can you hear me in the back? Rick, Julie? So, thank you so much for coming this evening to our kickoff for our grassroots campaign. And I'd like to call up my former boss, Berkeley Councilmember Cheryl D'Avila, who is also Chair of the Climate Emergency Task Force. I served as her Legislative Aid and Chief of Staff during our term. And with that, Cheryl, take it away.
Hello, everyone. It's so good to be here. I'm so honored and humbled to be here today with all of you on this joyous, courageous new beginning for Rusko, who will be the next Vallejo Councilmember representing Berkeley. As you said, I'm Cheryl D'Avila, a former Councilmember in the city of Berkeley and founder of the Climate Emergency Mobilization Task Force and the RV and Tiny Home Solutions to Homelessness Task Force and the former boss of Rusko. He always says that. So, welcome, everyone. And I've known Rusko for the past six years. I remember when I was running, I would see him, but I didn't know who he was. I wasn't, I'm not a politikerster. I wasn't into politics before I ran. So, I didn't know, but I remember seeing him at every endorsement meeting. He was there for Javanka or just to be there, right? And when I was on council, you know, I sent out a job thing, that announcement, and I got Rusko's application. So, I was super happy because he had already been in my world. Because when Berkeley declared a climate emergency in my office in 2018, Rusko was always at the Adam Fox Self-Defense Meeting, representing Javanka at those meetings. And so, then he became my Legislative Assistant and Chief of Staff. And after, so then Rusko was always on the right side of every issue, knowing who to reach out to, thoughtful solutions and suggestions. He's ready to lead. He has the connections, or he knows someone who does. He has integrity. He's loyal, dedicated, honest, and most of all, trustworthy. He comes to the space, ready to listen, hear, act with an open mind, and is comfortable speaking for those whose voices aren't often heard or listened to. And during our time while I was in office, we started the Climate Emergency Mobilization Task Force, where Rusko is still on the steering committee. He helped out with homeless seniors, the Strawberry Creek Lodge in Berkeley for senior housing. We made sure they got funding for their meals. He mentors the interns in our office. And he worked with youth who works against violence that performed at our Climate Emergency Mobilization Task Force after for the climate series. And he helped get the 64 units of housing hopefully built with 12 units for the developmentally disabled community. He also got all the parks in Berkeley in District 2 operating with their equipment and everything. And he was by my side during all my open office hours, which were monthly, meeting and greeting constituents, helping solve problems, because sometimes it takes a minute with the city bureaucracy. But he always would, I would often get calls or emails about how tentative and kind he was and patient with the people he was trying to serve. So, thank you, Rusko, for working for me and continuing to be my friend and colleague. He's always calling me up and saying, "Hey, I got so-and-so on the phone. You got a minute?" And I'm happy to hear his voice and to receive those calls. And the most important thing, Vallejo, you should elect Rusko for Yang Yang for District 4. He's accomplished all those things in Berkeley. Imagine what he can do for Vallejo. Good luck, Rusko. I know you're gonna win. You got the mayor here. You have all these people here to support you. All come out and knock on doors for you, too.
I wish...
I love you.
Yeah, I love you. I love you, boss. She's my forever boss and a great mentor. And all the things we're facing as you're coming downtown, we got potholes. And Cheryl and I, we also face potholes and street issues, street safety in Berkeley. And her predecessor, a 12-year incumbent, did not do anything. Nothing got done. The streets were in terrible condition. The parks were in terrible condition. And under our leadership, we got it done, and we left it in a better place. Thank you, Cheryl.
Save people's hearts.
Yes, save people's hearts. I'd like to call up my former boss, my still forever boss, the honorable former Richmond Councilmember Javanka Beckles. And I'd like to thank Javanka's wife, Nicole, for being here.
Well, good day, everybody. My name's Javanka Beckles, and as Rusko said, he has worked, we've worked together for so many years. You know, I'm gonna be short and sweet, at least that's the hope. But yeah, I'm going off the dome, so, but I'm gonna do my best to be short and sweet. But you know, Vallejo deserves this man right here to be their representative. Vallejo deserves a leader like this man right here who's loyal. He's loyal to justice. He's loyal for what's right. And as Cheryl mentioned earlier, he's always on the right side of the issue that affects, that affects the majority of us. Right when I'm talking about the majority, I'm talking about the 99%, the working class. Right, I'm talking about the poor, the disabled, like the rest of us, not the 1%. Not the ones who are just, you know, drawing blood from us daily when we only have a certain amount of blood, right? Eventually, we die. But that's why we need somebody like Rusko, because he's gonna be fighting for what's right. He's gonna be fighting against austerity. He's gonna be fighting for justice, making sure that police officers treat our residents, you know, with respect and dignity, right? That's, it's laughable, but that's how you do it. Change comes when you have people like Rusko in office who aren't there for their own personal, you know, their own personal ambition. Thank you. I'm using my wife's role. She's good at that. What's that word again? Ambition, yes. But you know, he's not, he's not in it for his personal, any personal gain. He's in it because he believes that the only way we may change is when working-class folks get into these positions to make sure that, you know, although healthcare is not within the purview of Vallejo City Councilmembers, where Rusko knows, when we were, when we were working together, I was on a Richmond City Council, there were so many things that weren't necessarily, you know, my responsibility as a council member. But when we speak up, like healthcare is a basic human right, right? Like, everyone should be able to have a home shelter for them to live in. Like, you know, like, everybody should be able to have a living wage. Like, there's stuff, although those definitely affect Vallejo residents, there are so many issues, though, that we have to voice our opinions. We can't stay silent, right? Because they know the only thing, the only way, when I think about it, I apologize, I lost my train of thought. The only way that we're gonna see change, right? You can't keep voting the same. You can't keep doing the same and expecting change. You gotta do it differently, and that's what Rusko is all about. When he worked with me, and I told you, I tell you, this man is loyal to a movement, a greater movement for good. I mean that. Every time there was an issue, it didn't matter how busy it is, he's gonna make it happen, right? And as Cheryl said, if he can do that in Berkeley, and if he can do that in Richmond, oh boy, Vallejo, y'all better look out. Tell your neighbors, knock on doors, yeah, because it takes money. I can really appreciate this brother right here recycling his sign. Now, that tells you, right? He's recycling, not just for the planet, but also to show, like, this is how we do it. You don't have to keep, but you still do leave money. You don't have to keep, you know, just spending and spending, but you do need to get some signs out. He needs to get the word out. He needs to be able to get some pamphlets out as he door-knocks. He needs to be able to have these yard signs. So, give whatever you can. That was not my role to pitch, but I know it's my role. I throw it out there. I throw it out there. So, funding you who can, give as much as you can, because it really does take a lot of money. And we don't pay corporate money. Like, we only depend on you, on us, on each other to be able to meet the needs of a campaign. And campaigns are hard. But I think it's gonna be fun, right? And y'all gonna get the word out, right?
Right.
Okay, y'all, let's talk to your family and friends, right? Okay, y'all talk to your neighbors, right?
Yeah, neighbors.
All right, all right. So, let's do it. Let's get this man elected. Elect a new Councilmember, Vallejo.
Wow, thank you. When you have two of my former bosses here, and I'm still in contact with them, and they're still like mentors, it's a hard act to follow because they're leaders in the Bay Area and on many issues. And they are great experts on the environment, how to hold public safety accountable, and much, much more. I'd like to call up a good friend of mine who I've known for a long time, Myrna Hayes, the President of the Mare Island Preserve. And Myrna knows a colleague of mine, Pam Stello from Pointe Meladi Alliance. So, Myrna, take it away. And a longtime resident of Vallejo.
That's true. Yeah, thank you very much. I'm just so happy to be here tonight and to know Rusko as a friend. You know, pick up the phone, you know how he does. Saturday morning, you got a phone call from Rusko. But the other thing he does that's so special to me is, in those phone calls, it's not just, "Well, how's Nitro? And how are things at the preserve?" But he calls you after a meeting that I may or may not have been at, and we just talk about what we can do that was prompted by that meeting to make this a better town, a better place. And it's just, it's kind of like me. I'm a nun to the Mare Island Preserve. Tomorrow will be our 14th anniversary, and I'll leave some flyers here with a schedule. Rusko was at our 13th birthday party, when our preserve turned teenage year, at 13. And we have some great photos of him there. I guess what I'm saying is, you wouldn't be here if Rusko wasn't your guy, you know, first. But I have been approached by a number of other staff or volunteer staff or other people running in District 4. This is the first time District 4 has ever had an election in it. District 4 is a powerhouse in this town because it's Vallejo Heights, Washington Park, Mare Island, of course, and St. Vincent's Hill, where I've lived for 31 years.
And Marine World.
And Marine World, wow, or Six Flags, as we call it now. But I guess what I would try to say is that either each one of those people who have called me for my support for the other candidate, this one or that one or that one or that one, and there's getting to be a lineup, I just have a simple question. Are you gonna support us to become the 4-3 majority in the favor of the natural resources on Mare Island and in this community? As a simple ask, I don't have to ask Rusko. That's simple. Nobody has to call me, and there's no awkward moments. Because people in this town know that I stand up for you. I stand up for what matters to this community if it comes, if it's anything from housing to transportation to, but my heart is stuck on Mare Island. I don't know what happened. I made a little video last night on Facebook. I have, you know, 150 people watched it. But I just got sucked in in April 2014, 1994, on the environmental cleanup. That is not a sexy job, trust me. But what is sexy is the fabulous part that we have that is native land. We were just talking about. Absolutely, the entire island, the entire town is. But it's important to me that whoever is our next District 4 Councilperson can articulate the complexities of Mare Island and what it means to our community as a community playground, as a community source of economic recovery and of a place to go that is a sacred and holy place. So, Rusko, you're my person.
Thank you, Myrna. I worked with, when I was working with Councilmember Beckles in Richmond, we were working with the Pointe Meladi Alliance, trying to preserve the open space from overdevelopment, and it's right next to Chevron. We gotta protect our open space, our environment, and the safety of our residents, not put them in danger when something, a major disaster, happens. I'd like to call up a good friend of mine, Susanna Delano. We ran together over a year ago, for those that remember, as the District 14 delegates to the State Democratic Party. Susanna knows many of my friends here and the people we've worked with. She's been a Vallejo resident for many years. I'm so glad that she's here, and let her take it away.
Thank you, Rusko. Can you guys hear me? I don't always project. I'm a preacher's daughter, but I didn't inherit the gene. Like Rusko said, I'm Susanna. I was in the area, working with in-home supportive services providers, home care workers for a long time throughout my twenties. And then with Planned Parenthood, I went down to Oakland for a while. I moved back to Vallejo in 2019, really excited to come back, see where things left off. And Rusko was one of the first people I met. I wanted to run for ADEM, and I linked up with this slate. And Rusko really has become my political home for homecoming in this community, and I'm very grateful. Those of you, you guys know him. He's earnest. All the values that I look for in my day job recruiting candidates to run for office, Rusko has. He's transparent. He cares. His values are consistent. He reaches out. He's proactive. He has follow-through, all these things. And a couple of you might know my work with Close the Gap California. I don't work with very many male candidates. It's very rare, my entire job. Night, while I'm sleeping, while I'm awake, whatever I'm doing, I'm working with women. I'm working mainly with women of color. And Rusko is an exceptional friend and candidate, and for that reason, I'm here today. And I'm very proud to support him. And I wish I lived in the district, but I'm right next door.
Right next door.
And I'm very happy to talk to people in the district. So, thanks, everybody.
Thank you so much, Susanna. And I do want to do a special recognition with our community leaders in the room, former Vallejo School Board President Mary Ann Cretin-Grau, who I served with. For those that remember my time in the school board, I could not have survived without her because we, because her and I, anytime residents came to us, we listened, and we fought the good fight. We asked questions, and we're not rubber stampers. And what's the common thread that we all share, whether it's Cheryl, Javanka, Mary Ann, myself, is we fight for the people, and we don't back down, and we don't understand. I want to thank Mary Ann for being here and supporting us for us since day one. I want to call up Bobby Lopez, say a few words, and then Vallejo Councilmember Tina Ariola. Go ahead, Bobby.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me? Okay, good, because I'm hoping I project as well. So, I am Bobby Lopez. I actually am from the city of Oakland, where I met Rusko when he was working with the city of Berkeley. But I think I'm gonna say a lot of what has already been said. Rusko is really one of the most sincere people I've ever met in my life. Forget politics. I mean, that's a rare thing, but just sincere in general, and that's really, really important. And the responsiveness is just so true. I mean, I think anyone who's worked in government or worked in politics knows that sometimes you don't get answers or responses from your elected officials. And the follow-through I've seen on Rusko is unmatched, unlimited, and like, just so immediate. And it isn't just like your, you know, your email that you get that's just like, oh, kind of a response to every constituent. It's like really thought out, follow-through, trying to figure out solutions. And that's the kind of person, that's the kind of quality you want in an electorate, is to really have that detail-oriented responsiveness. And so, I really just value that tremendously. I also really just want to talk about the fact that Rusko is such a hard worker. He's a force of nature, so I don't know who's running against him, but I feel bad for that. Because frankly, he is such a hard worker. And I know he's gonna door-knock across the district. I know I and so many other people are gonna help him because we want him to win because of the values and the qualities that he has for a person that I think we so deeply need in the political world. I know that I already mentioned sincerity, but one of the things that, you know, that's so important to me is that when you're from a small city, and I know Oakland's a lot bigger than Miami, also, yes, but when you're from a smaller city, like, your pot of money to do things is not like a San Francisco. You can't just do this, you can't just do that. You have to be really thoughtful and creative. I met Rusko and Councilmember D'Avila because they were reaching out to the city of Oakland and to the city of Richmond to figure out how to partner in different things like climate change and homelessness, which, by the way, I'm sure homelessness is a problem here. It's definitely a problem in Oakland. And, you know, we want to collectively work out solutions. And when you're a small city, you've gotta think regionally. And so, I really appreciate how Rusko and Cheryl thought that. They're like, no, we need to, they called us to reach out to work out things. And that is so profound, and frankly, also something that's very rare. And the last thing, we actually have many more things to say, but I'll pick and choose and see what we get to say. Again, integrity and the kindness, but there's one story I did want to share, which is one time I was on a call with a particular senator who will be unnamed, and Rusko was in the car. And he was just, I think I was giving you a ride somewhere, and the senator could not remember her bill. And Rusko, just, you know, I headed on you, and Rusko's like, "Oh, it's this bill, blah, blah, blah."
SB 16.
And so, then I went on, I was like, "Okay, Rusko, I'm gonna like her, that's her bill." So, I go on, I say, "Oh, this is the bill you're referring to, blah, blah, blah." He's like, "Oh, wow, thank you." I was like, "Thanks, Rusko, you just made me look great." But, you know, I think that's the thing about Rusko. He's whip-smart, too. He's really whip-smart. He's attentive to detail. He's sincere. He's kind. He's thoughtful, and he cares about big picture as much as potholes. And that's the kind of person you want. You want the balance of the two. So, anyway, I've said enough. There's probably tons more speakers, but I hope to meet many of you as we're walking and door-knocking for him, as we're making phone calls for him, because that's how you win elections. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Bobby. Bobby.
Oh, God, I'm sorry.
Wow, Bobby. That's why we cannot solve these problems, homelessness to public safety. We cannot solve it alone. We gotta partner up because we're all facing it, and even potholes, too. I'd like to call up an amazing family member, and she's been a, she's a product of South Vallejo, born and raised, and involved in the Filipino community since the '60s with her family. And she won her election during COVID, during Smoke, and she was facing like two competitors at the time. And she prevailed with her grassroots campaign. And on council, she's been on the city council for over a year now. Her and Mayor McConnell, when you look at their voting record, they've been always for the people. They may have been outvoted 5 to 2 on many issues, but what's important is, as Councilmember Beckles said, who's for the people? What's on your record? With that, I'd like to bring up Councilmember Tina Ariola. Say a few words.
You know I got you. You know that, right? You know I got you. All right, thank you, every one of you, for coming out. Wow, I just realized I was in a huge parade of women just marching on up, and you have been working with them. So, how lucky am I, you know, to be part of that awesome Warrior Queen team, right? As Rusko said, I am newly elected, so I'm going into my second year coming up in June. It'll be a year and a half that I've been on council. And Rusko will be facing a lot of big challenges. The new council will be facing a lot of new challenges. What we are struggling with right now, our city is in need of these new voices. Get rid of the old guard that hasn't been working. You've been voting for the same thing over and over, yet nothing is changing. Goodbye. Get new people in here. And Rusko, I couldn't be more, I couldn't be more humped about him running because I will be out there at every, he comes to my events. He doesn't have to. I'm not, you know, I have to do that. You know, I just like, oh, what date is that? He'll come and be there to support me. He doesn't have to do that. And that is part of his, of his character. He cares for his friends. He cares for, more, most importantly, he really deeply cares about Vallejo. I've never seen anybody more passionate about Vallejo than Rusko. He and I are both products of the Vallejo Unified School District. So, we have, we have that connection. We can share our experiences, having grown up as a product of Vallejo School District. I am an example. He is an even better example of what the school districts can bring forth. He has been engaged in his civic clubs in high school. He has, at an early age, this curiosity of government. I mean, you know, where other kids are out there doing this or doing that. His focus has been city government. What makes it tick? What can I do? How can I support? And he has done that incrementally along the way. People say, "Wasn't he a politician? You know, I mean, he was on the school board, and he, you know, look at that, the failure of the school board." You know, people want to drum up this drama from, you know, a decade or so ago, which he had no control over because he was that lone vote, just like I have been that lone vote, you know? I get, the blame gets put on me. Well, you know, I voted for you guys. You know, you guys asked me to vote this way, and I did. It doesn't always succeed. So, he, he's gonna keep fighting away and be, my God, the nerd brain that he has for politics. It is off the charts. It is off the charts. And like, Bobby, what you'd said about when you're in the car and stuff. I can see Rusko in there. You ask him, like, "There." There it is. And he has done that on more than one occasion. I mean, all of a sudden, that AB bill is, it was like, "Would you get that?" So, anyway, he's the only candidate. The other ones don't even come close, not close. This is the man you want to see sitting on the dais in January 2023. And nobody else is gonna compete with him at all. Smooth operator, smooth operator. Don't judge him by this little demeanor here. He's a powerhouse underneath it. He is, right? And I love him dearly. I love him dearly.
Wow, thank you so much, Ate. And wow. And just to also add, she held a town hall meeting a couple Saturdays ago, and I volunteered as her secretary for that town hall meeting. I'm happy to volunteer for elected officials that I trust, including like Mayor McConnell, who will be sticking in a few lines. I'd like to President Kristi Gardner to say a few words. I'd like to present Kristi Gardner to say a few words. I remember when I first met Kristi four years ago, almost four years ago, and, and we were door knocking together, and I was trying for reelection for school board. So Kristi, say it.
When I first met Rusko, I was actually pretty new to, oh, I'd been here for three years. It was my second, second living in Vilejo, second time living in Vilejo. So I was running for the school board, and I met Rusko. He was another candidate running for the school board. This is in 2018. And we did debate crap over at Mayor McConnell's law offices. And that's how I really first met him. And then we had kind of a slate of candidates, and we walked the neighborhoods, and I think we walked just about every neighborhood in Vilejo. I think I lost 10 pounds, so I really was going to walk with him again. But the one word that hasn't come up yet that I want to share as far as a description of Rusko is, he's humble. He's humble. He's done a lot. He does a lot, but he's not, he's not right out there in your face telling everybody what he's done and what a wonderful person is. He is, he's humble. And I, I really appreciate that. You don't meet a lot of politicians that are humble. And I, one of the things that I used to say to him when we were walking is, you're going places. You know, you're not just going to be a school board member. You're going places. And, you know, this, to me, this is another step in his trajectory. Because I believe he's going places other than just city council member for District 4 in Vilejo. So he's my man.
And Kristi is one of our residents in Council District 4, so look forward to door knocking and getting many of our volunteers to door knock in District 4. I'd like to call up a longtime mentor of mine. Even though I've been in public service starting in 2007, working at Vilejo City Hall. When I first met Councilmember McConnell, when he was first running in 2011. He came, I was on the City Youth Commission at the time, and he, and he was the only council candidate coming to our commission meeting. I remember, June 2011. And yeah, he's, he's always been for the people. I'd like to call Mayor McConnell.
First off, thank you all for being here, because this means a lot, especially for Rusko, but also for you. And you've heard a lot of accolades about Rusko. I want to echo them certainly. But I also want to call your attention to a few things. It is the most diverse district in the city of Vilejo, in terms of people, in terms of economics, in terms of need. And the good thing about Rusko is, he's lived in that district most of his life. He knows that district. And he's dependable. Even if you don't agree with him on some issues, of course, nobody can agree with everybody all the time. You can depend that he'll have his arguments down. He'll know why he's saying what he's saying, and he will stick to it. And there's a reason why I think we're, we're meeting here today in the home style. He is home style. Yep. He represents the best version of this city, and he certainly reflects what this city is all about. That's enough about Rusko. Let's talk about you. Look at the sign up there. Authentic fan. This campaign is going to be long, hard, many, expensive, and tough. And you are the ones who are doing it on behalf of me, that authentic fan. Because when July, August, and those hot days are here, and he's got to go out and pound that pavement, knock on doors, and he will. He's going to need fan base to not only encourage him to walk with him and start making those phone calls. There were, thirty people here today. If each one of you asked one person in District 4 by phone tonight to vote for him, that's 60, 60 doing the same thing, and 120, and the magnifier impact will start to take place. That's where your job as authentic fan comes in. And it will lead to the next sign you see here, strength in numbers. How many wins an election on their own? Not a single, for no matter how great or how terrible they may be. We are highly dependent as elected officials upon strength in numbers. There are roughly 20,000 people at District 4. And I don't know how many candidates we have. Thank heavens for district elections, because we're showing that we're finally bringing government back to people with that concept. But Rusko can have that strength in numbers, a few authentic fans to get behind him between now and every day to November. That's a long time. And that's what your job is here today. People who have spoken today, we're going to lend our names and our support and our appearance and all that. But that's not enough. It's what you do, what you're going to have to do to get this man elected, because Vilejo needs this type of person. We are on the verge of changing the mentality and the approach of how we do business in this city. But if we don't get new people with new ideas in, different ideas than the established quo that we've had for too many years in this city. We will not make that change that district elections promise. So please be an authentic fan and back this with your strength in numbers. We can do this. We can put him in office. And then will be the time to relax and enjoy in November. Okay? Thank you. I got to run after that. I've got to go talk to somebody about doing a marriage ceremony.
Wow, wow. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wow, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for being here. And just a little fun fact, it's going to be eight years this month. Some of us were at his city council, or six years, I got to correct that, six years, April 2016, at his city council reelection party. And some of us were there, and I'm so glad he's our mayor, finding good fight along with Councilmember Ariola and baby help. And this is where our campaign comes in. Before I get there, I'd like to also have, I'd like to call up Ms. Eloise Scott, longtime Filipino community leader. She serves as a director, board director for the Filipino community of Solano County, so say a few words. Go Eloise.
Good afternoon to you all. I'm Eloise Scott. I have been a member for a long time in the Filipino community. And in order to win for Rusko, you have to work hard. Campaign for him to call by telephone in order this guy will win. Because we need him. I think the city council needs you. You need him, right? Because he doesn't believe on donation from the union that they will, they will tell him later on, hey, this is what I want you to do.
No policing in money. Hell no.
So Rusko is the one that you really have to work hard. And with my experience, I, I always help people. That's why our congressman, Mike Thompson, awarded me as Woman of the Year in Solano County. But when he called me and I said, Mayor, Congressman, there are more people who deserve to be, you know, recognized. I do charity. I don't care whether I'll be recognized or they will do something for me. I don't care. That's why, and I said, that's why I am recognizing you. Don't say no. I present your name already in Congress, that you are my Woman of the Year in Solano County. But anyway, really, you have heard who Rusko is. So please, please, all of us, work hard for his campaign that he will win. Because even though if you have lots of money, but nobody will vote for you, there's no value. But again, I, I ask of you, all of you, please campaign for Rusko, for city council.
Well, I can't believe it. Wow, I'm just so thankful to each and every one of you for being here this evening to support our grassroots campaign. And also, I just want to thank Yvonne and Ms. Nana for hosting us. This is like a homecoming. And I got to thank Ms. Kearney Brown, because she's the one that got me connected to them when we were running for election years ago. And this is like a homecoming for our campaign. The last time we held in the venue here was almost four years ago, election night, November, November 2018. So we're so thankful to be back home, and this is where we're going to start our new adventure. And I just want to let everyone know, we have a fabulous art walk, modeled after the Oakland First Friday Art Walk. So once, once we're finished here, please enjoy that and support many of the artists and businesses. And this is one of the things that makes Vilejo great, just like, just like any city in the Bay Area, is our art walk, our diversity, our community, the history, the, many of the restaurants here, especially in District 4. Which, from the China Walk to Good Day Cafe here, Home Style Cafe, The Fol Place, The Bud's Burger, if you've heard of it. Povisions. And Korean Mama's Cooking, which is in our district. And I also want to thank my campaign team, who's, Bruce and Tony, our volunteers. Thank you for holding us down. And many of our volunteers and advisors who are in this room and, and also with us in spirit. With that, I am about to enter, as today you see, it's a metaphor of, of the campaign we're about to enter. After speaking with many of you, and many of our residents who could not be here, who could not attend council meetings, community events. They're out there facing day-to-day issues and listening to their concerns, their worries, their hope for the future. And, and based on their feedback, this is why I formulated the platform, the policy priorities you see on the flyer. Because as I told them, what you tell me, this is what I'm going to fight for. And this is, and I've honored that, and I'm going to continue to fight for them. I'm here to finally announce that I'm seeking election to the Vilejo City Council, District 4. I'll tell you why I'm in this election, why I'm running. I'm running because I want to bring your voice to city government, and not just at City Hall. City council members also serve on regional boards and commissions, like Councilmember Ariola and Mayor McConnell. So it doesn't stop there. I'm here to fight for the people wherever I go. And one of the things we need to fix is our streets, our potholes. We've got to make it safer. Have you noticed when driving in, hitting a pothole, or, or, yeah, enough said. But yet, the city is wasting money, lots of money, left and right. For example, they bought an $800,000 house months ago using our water money that we're all struggling to pay our water bill for themselves, right next to the water plant. And it cannot be used to help the homeless. It's only going to be used for themselves. And once they buy it without doing proper vetting, it's just sitting there. So what a waste of money. And I want to thank Councilmember Ariola and Mayor McConnell for voting no on that. But that's one of too many, because the people are not being heard. So we got to stop wasteful spending and mismanagement. And to do that, we need to bring in a city auditor. I've worked with, Councilmember Dopple and I, we've worked with the city auditor Jenny Wong in Berkeley. And I'm familiar with the, with the policy, and I can champion that here in Vilejo, so that we can finally take that money and finally reinvest in fixing the streets and into the community. We also need to get the, get the county and the state to help our homeless. Currently, City Hall has mismanaged the navigation center. They told the community it was supposed to be open last year. But yet, as, as we learned at the council meetings, oops, we went over budget. Oops, the land is now toxic. It feels like, they did not do due diligence. So City Hall is so incapable of doing anything. We got to get the county and state agencies to help us, to turn this around. Because they've got lots of money and they're better equipped to help the homeless in permanent solutions and services. Ah, thank you. And if you notice, like, the dumping, Vilejo is, some people think Vilejo is a dumping ground. We got to stop that. We got to learn from other cities that has successfully prevented illegal dumping, and we got to raise the, we got to raise the fees and the fines. And that's, and that's a simple legislation I can introduce and fight for. And finally, we got to protect the environment, our seniors, our youth, our LGBT communities, and the voice, and the voiceless. Because that's, that's always number one. And lastly, as you've heard, Vilejo unfortunately makes the news for police misconduct. We got to hold our public safety officials accountable. We got to bring a community police oversight commission. I've worked with Councilmember Becca to update our commission on that years ago. That's badly needed. So, but I cannot do this alone. We got to door knock, door knock like as soon as possible. So, and hopefully, once we win this grassroots campaign, and since day one, I have not accepted and will never accept money from questionable special interests. Like police, fossil fuels, gambling, gambling industry, casinos. Nope. No more. Because time and time again, people that look like us, they talk a good game, and they run. And once they get into office with their special interest donors and backers, it's quid pro quo, unfortunately. And we, we, the people lose out on it. So that has to stop. I'm happy to introduce Campaign Quietish Reform, Once Elected. So it's going to take all of us and our neighbors, because we cannot forget the rest of the district. We're here in downtown. For those that may not know, when I first came from Vilejo 30 years ago, from the Philippines, I first lived down in Tijuana, Maine. And I grew up throughout the district and throughout Vilejo ever since. And been living here most of my life and seeing the changes. So, and been, and been in public service since 2007, when I worked at City Hall. And I remember going to my first council meeting and school board meetings and knowing the history. So with, with all that experience and historical knowledge, I could hit the ground running. And having worked for two amazing council members and working with many elected officials and many residents here, and, and those who could not be here. Another reason why to join our movement. So with that, thank you so much for, for being here. We're going to have our next event. We're going to announce that in the, in the next couple of weeks, for next month. And it'll be in the eastern part of the district, because we cannot forget, while District 4 and the residents think this, this district is just downtown. St. Vincent, Mayor Island, Naval Shipyard, Vilejo Heights. We cannot forget Lopis Lakeside Neighborhood, the Dan Foley Park Neighborhood, and the Mobile Home Park. We got to, we got to fight for them. And the Mobile Home Park and apartments down Fairgrounds. And the hot, and the neighbors around the, living next to Kaiser and Center Hospital. That's half of the district right there. And that's the people I'm going to fight. And lastly, I got one last thing before we all go. I want to, or two last things. One, I want to recognize one of my first campaign volunteers for school board, Ricky Estrada, who's now our Solano County Public Defender Attorney. We count on them. And I do want to thank the Perez family for being here. And yes, we... For those that may not know, I go up to Sacramento to represent, save our seniors network or the elected official I work for. And sometimes I will go with the Perez family. And we got some major bills passed that's going to affect especially Vallejo in a positive way, such as SB 2 to decertify bad cop from Miss Punda. It's law now. So now... Just like a dentist, a doctor, or hairstylist, if they do a bad job, they could lose their license. So why not police officers? Now it's law. So, thank you. Yes, for doing a terrible job. That's how we use for justice our first time. And we've got ways to go. And lastly, final announcement. Oh, yeah. We have someone's birthday, so I want to recognize Tina Ariola. It's her birthday today. I'm going to get the cake. So let's see if that's her birthday.
Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to Tina. Happy Birthday to you.
Is a human going to jump out of there?
I'm going to thank Mary for this.
Ooh, it's cold. Is that ice cream cake?
No.
Oh, it's gorgeous.
And one last announcement. I'd like to have Kim Deal Campbell say a few words.
I just want to say for all of you that if you're in Solano County, we need to get behind a new district attorney because if we continue to have the same district attorney who continues to let these police murder our citizens, brutalize our citizens with impunity, then we are never going to get anywhere. It's just going to continue to be an endless cycle of corruption. So we need to get behind Sharon Henry, and it's time for Blue Eyes Abrams to go.